See if anyone logs in. Open at time. So the, the minutes that we need to approve are the June minutes, but you and I and Rick would be the only ones and Rick said he didn't think he was gonna make it tonight.
Larry's not.
Larry, Larry wasn't, yeah, I, I think Larry was there, but maybe.
He's not gonna be making.
He's not making the meeting. And so I think we're gonna have a relatively short. I don't know, did you?
I got the email after we spoke, but I couldn't download what you had sent.
Yeah.
And I'm having problems with that computer, so I'm not gonna blame yours.
I didn't pop these in. This is, this is what makes that. Right, Bush. I'd be very surprised. Could get that many lots in anything near in Abeska.
Okay, sure. Can I have this coffee?
Yeah, I took coffee. That, that's what they sent and they took this off some type of wetland map. And like apparently she's having them go out and chat closer. But I think I talked to Holly, the woman who's looking at buying that, and I thought she was talking that she kind of is interested in doing some type of cluster development. But I, I emailed them this morning and said, you know, without a concept drawing showing the lots, the road, any roads, it's really hard for us to even give a preliminary. I mean, I, I suggested to Holly that she talk to Bill Monagle at Cobbusy Watershed. Good evening. Good evening. Haven't seen you since June. Well, maybe on the road.
Yeah. Have you got the June minutes?
I might be able to get them on my phone. I tried to print a set tonight to my home computer. And I, even though I put in a new printer cartridge, it just was both body, you couldn't read it. So my printer at home may be not working.
Okay, cuz I didn't see or hear anything from Libby before she.
Well, she sent them to me and maybe I didn't distribute them. You know, she's done.
Yeah.
So that, that's part of the problem.
Right.
And but I'll send them out to everybody again.
Okay.
We really the only substantive thing we did that night was review. Was it Lewandowski? Was that his name? He had the expansion of his house on Jugstream, Cobbusy. I think we talked a little bit about rumored solar development, maybe on Cobbusy Road, but I'm not. I had, I've had a rough day. I can't remember anything. Across from the Sanborn Road.
Larry Lane, sorry, driver.
No, no, the, the major road that goes over to Day's Corner.
Walkin Road.
No.
No, South.
South Monmouth Road. They were rumored that there was gonna be a solar development, but where AD Electric used to be, but I we haven't, as far as I know, we haven't heard anything.
Just so you know, I, you know, I spoke with Laurie to know told her, you know, what had taken place here. There was a lack of information, you know, communication, the whole nine, yeah, it's just, yeah, I should, I know. I said, so, I said, anything that you can dig up, I says, you know, that Libby or Matt might have left hanging around. Says, we appreciate it. So I don't know if anything will come out of it. But I got Richard's number, the, the nine four one, okay, which is official CEO phone. And got you know, the fact that he wasn't picking up the call, but you could text him or call later.
Yeah, yeah.
So I ran this by Laurie and she says, well, she says, it's not only Richard, she says, I got the same problem with Justin. Yeah. So basically we have a part-time government. What's that? Basically, we have a part-time government in town. Well, yeah, I mean, when they're not on duty, don't, don't bother them. That's fantastic.
May I see this from her?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we'll, we'll call a meeting to order. September eighth, meeting of the Monmouth Planning Board. And we have four members present here. Ray Simon, Larry Sosier, David Mills, even O'Donnell, John Davinsky via Zoom. Rick didn't think that he could make it back from a work site in time. And our new member, Bonnie Green, is having trouble linking in. I told her to call and I put her on the speaker. So the only minutes that we, we have minutes from our June meeting. I had trouble printing them and I didn't think Larry would be here tonight. So I guess we'll, we'll pass on them unless later on I could try to get them on my so, I mean, nobody's apparently seen them, so.
Right.
Um, we'll just, I don't think there's anything critical. We had the, I think Lewandowski approval. I wrote a decision. So the business side of it's been taken care of. But we need to kind of just to formalize the minutes from that. So everyone in agreement will pass on the minutes tonight.
The minutes will be taken up next month.
Right. Um, so the only business I got, I, I got a call last week from this woman, Holly Savinius, and she's looking at property that used to be owned by the Frost family. It's off, it's on Route 135. Not far from the, you know, just up the road going toward town from the East Monmouth Community Church. And she said, you know, she's made an offer contingent on some inspections. It's a pretty large lot. I don't know if we can tell from this, I think it's somewhere between 50 and 70 acres. And it borders the lake. Burtwood Drive runs from 135 down to the sort of the lake area. And she wants to put in a subdivision. The email we were sent kind of described some lots on the, the lake. And then some interior lots. The, the broker said 21 lots, which seems like quite a few. But when Holly talked to me, she was talking about a maybe some type of cluster development with, you know, open space. I told her the biggest, you know, she was trying to say, well, what am I up against? And I kind of said, well, it's, you know, until we see something, you know, a conceptualized, probably is Bonnie. Hello? Yes. So that link, the link didn't work from the calendar? Yeah.
It doesn't go, it doesn't work at all.
No, because John used that, John Davinsky is, he was able to click on it and connect. So I'm not quite sure why he went in through the calendar agenda.
Yeah, I did too. That's exactly what I clicked on.
Yeah, so maybe, I think it's a problem on your end. But if, if you wanna listen in via phone, we don't have very much on the agenda.
Okay. All right, I'll do that because I, I've tried and tried and tried and simply knowing just when you're supposed to click on something that's working, there's like a little glove.
Yeah.
And that, that's for a hand and that glove has never been on that page for me.
Well, that's strange.
I'll try again.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, but we'll, so we were just we were just discussing what we have, what we're treating as a, a pre-application discussion. We got a a, a map of this property on Route 135. Not too far from the East Monmouth Community Church that runs along Burtwood Drive down to the Anabesakook. And this lady has made an offer to buy it and she's hoping to put what I understand is a kind of a cluster subdivision. And what they sent us was sort of a wetland map. And I'm not sure there's really enough information here that we could really do much with it. I, I was just telling the folks here that I had emailed the broker and Holly this morning saying that we'd really need some type of for this purpose, pre-application, a, at least a, a concept plan that showed us where the lots are and how big they are and if, if there's any internal road. Holly had, when she emailed me this morning, she said her, she was traveling and she had a problem with her laptop, so.
Looking at the map, but the is the red? I can see everything that's a bridge. And then there's different arrows.
Yeah, there's no bridge. I think they're just showing that as a wetland area. What you're looking at is a wetland area that maybe is behind the existing building. So she, apparently their plan was to send somebody on site to do more, look more at the, the wetland issues. So I had strongly suggested, I mean, I told this woman when I talked to her on the phone last week that the big issues often are stormwater management and phosphorus export issues. And that, you know, she might wanna reach out to the Cobbusy Watershed District to get an idea what she would be facing in terms of this type of development. I mean, if she's talking.
What, what kind of a development is she talking about on wetland?
Well, I mean, obviously they have to go around the wetland areas.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I think it's gonna be difficult to get that many lots on that lot, I think. Anabesakook is one of the more sensitive lakes in the watershed. And I think they would need to do a lot of mitigation.
Have we ever done a cluster here in Monmouth?
I don't think so.
I don't recall.
No.
Can you put your phone on speaker?
It is on speaker.
Oh, oh, okay. All right. Then I'll put mine on speaker and then we can both hear.
Yeah, I just turned up my volume. Yeah, the, the question was, would, do we ever do a cluster? No, I mean, what that allows you to do is have smaller lots with open space. Correct. And you know, we built it into our subdivision law, but nobody has, you know, we haven't had a subdivision. We've had a couple amendments, but no actual plan has been submitted for a number of years.
I had some, in, in another capacity, I had some exposure to some cluster developments. And a number of the issues were similar to the area here where you don't have any central supply for either water or sewage.
Yeah.
So you, it, it's sometimes problematic to anticipate or to get support.
Yeah.
For that many houses in that close proximity.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, cuz they would each have to have water and sewerage and then you got the well has to be a certain di- distance from the septic system route. And so I, I think, I mean, my take would be we just get back to, I'd get back to them and again, say, you know, it, it's hard for us just with this limited amount of information, but maybe I, I, you know, I didn't mention to her septic and well issues, but that would certainly be an issue for how many lots you could get too. I mean, whether it's a traditional subdivision.
One, one subdivision that I dealt with was they were far enough apart so that there were like four to six houses in, in different clusters.
Yeah.
And they had, for those houses, they had like a central well and a central septic system.
Yeah.
And then another one was larger and they had like a centralized, almost like a mini city, if you will.
Yeah.
Well, and sewage treatment facility.
And I think she was talking about in that email about maybe a common building, maybe down.
By the water.
By the water. For some reason, years ago, we, we, we looked at this lot and someone must have had some other plan. Cuz I can remember going down and seeing the beach. But I don't, it, it was, it was probably 10 years ago. Cuz that, that farmhouse has been unoccupied, isn't it? I mean, it's not in very good shape. Looks like attempts over the year.
That's the old farmhouse?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I was, I, I thought that was it, but I wasn't, I wasn't.
I mean, I don't think this drawing shows it, but this was a wetland map. Maybe it died.
Yeah, somebody's been working on that over the last year.
Yeah.
And, and quite frankly, I'm fairly familiar with that because the snowmobile trail comes up through there. There's not that much wetland down there, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, this map just shows some, a couple of spots.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's, it's a relatively stable parcel.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's got, it, it has probably one of the best pieces of beaches on the lake.
Yeah.
John.
Yo.
When you say somebody's been working in that area, you talking on the structure or on the land or what?
No, they've been working on the house.
They've been working on the house.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
At house. For the project portion, working on the backyard section and that type of thing.
Okay.
You know, I don't know, I don't know whether they're, the, the plan was, you know, to sell the house separately. I really don't know if the house is included in this. But again, you know, this gives us some idea, but really I don't think enough that we could give her any insight other than I, I'll, I'll mention, you know, you have, they're gonna have to have private well and septic and that's gonna limit probably the number of lots just because of the setbacks you have to have.
I don't know how how close or densely the, the neighbors are.
Yeah, yeah.
Cuz you get that many, that many houses sucking on the aquifer. It can have some adverse effects.
Right, right. Yeah. 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 And this would be, you know, this would be a major subdivision, not the typical, you know, five lot or something. Pretty big and
Yeah, we're gonna have to, more than a hand-drawn plan for this one.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And I would expect, you know, the Anabesakook Lake Improvement Association would be concerned about any development on the lake. I would guess Ms., Ms. Branding would be all over this. Yeah, yeah, so. Okay, so I think we can move on then. I mean, there's just, everyone agrees, yeah, we're kind of limited here. So it's, as you may have heard, Matt, the last code enforcement officer has left. We have Richard Greenwall now who works two days from Monmouth in two days, I think, or two or three days. I don't know the exact breakdown. He works part-time for Belgrade, part-time from Monmouth. And I heard his hours in Monmouth are gonna be Mondays and Wednesdays.
I had talked to Laurie one time and she said he was gonna be there on Friday.
Well, he was there in Fri- I think he has been. I think the, I think the concern was may, you know, he's been going in in the office as an open on Friday.
Okay, right.
So he had reached out to me. Oh, maybe in July, you know, kind of introduced himself and said, what, what do I send to the planning board? Which didn't give me great confidence in his experience. So I sent him a little summary and suggested he look at the land use chart in the in the shoreline zoning ordinance. And he was aware that subdivisions would come to us. And then I said, well, also commercial site plans. And I kind of referred him to the section there and you know, I, I, I talked to Ray, you know, I, I think I gotta go and actually meet with him and it's just during the summer, it's been so so difficult and and if he's there so limited, you know, probably we gotta set a time where he doesn't have appointments. But I so anyway, I, you know, and then I, I think I had emails, you know, I've had email communications, you know, we hadn't, he had nothing for us for August. And he said, well, I think you're gonna have some stuff for September. There's a, a couple of people or something. I didn't hear anything, didn't hear anything. And I was out of town on Friday and Monday was a holiday. So I called him Tuesday morning and the phone rang, rang and rang. And then I got a message. It didn't say Monmouth Code Enforcement. It just said it's not set up to take messages. Why don't you send a text? So I sent a text. I also sent an email. I got no response. I finally yesterday kind of sent an email to Justin. And he couldn't reach him. He said, well, I'll talk to him next week, but I'm assuming, you know, I thought perhaps we should have a meeting in case somebody walked in, even though because we don't have any paperwork, we couldn't do much, but at least we could talk to them, but no one showed up, so maybe that's, that's for the bad.
I'm from, from right around in town, I think we're experiencing some of the similarities to Winthrop where, you know, people going to get a building permit or to do something. And they either aren't appraised or neglect to understand that they need to have an inspection for certain things and off they go.
Yeah, yeah. And I, you know, I'm hearing rumors that, you know, houses being built without permit.
That, that is correct also.
And you know, there was some clearing out on 202 that I thought that it, that given the extent of the clearing and who I understood was doing it, that it was commercial, that we should have seen something, but I don't know. And, you know, I had a meeting with Justin about the comp plan. And I, I kind of said, you know, there's some concern whether, you know, should someone be looking at the permit issue just to make sure that there is something out there that if, if it needs approval can get, you know, reviewed, but I don't know. It's, I mean, I know I heard Jason was out one week for COVID and one week for vacation last month, so again, you know, how that's affecting things, but I, I did talk to Dave Shaw. And he said he he's talked to Richard a couple of times and, and offered to help, you know, guide him where to go.
I'd send him a, a couple of emails with a request for certificate of occupancy or use.
Yeah.
You know, for an inspection and that. And I never got a copy back. I only got thanks.
Ah, yeah.
I mean, I, I have no idea.
Okay, I'm Richard. He's gonna be leaving Belgrade and going to Manchester as CEO. That's the reason that in Monmouth, he's going from Friday to Wednesday. So he's gonna be putting in a full week between Manchester and Monmouth.
Yeah.
But Manchester wanted a Friday evidently.
Yeah.
But I tried to get ahold of him today as well with no success, so my feeling is we should ask him to come to the next planning board meeting. Whether there's something there for him or not.
Yeah.
We, we've got to establish a line of communication.
Yeah.
Plain and simple as that.
Well, he left us hanging. I mean, I get busy, you know, and I, you know, I, you, you kind of expect the support staff is gonna do, you know, he's supposed to do the agenda. You know, and I, you know, the transition from You know, and I, you know, the transition from Linda to Justin in some ways hasn't been smooth. You know, Linda said, this will be done, you know? And, um, you know, I'm not sure what the staffing situation is in the town office. I think there's been some changes there.
Uh, still not adequate.
Yeah. And I don't know, um, I think I heard Justin takes the minutes at the select board meeting.
Doing the minutes for the select.
So I don't know what we're gonna have, you know, if we had something complicated. You know, how are we gonna get our minutes done? So that, that's a question I'm gonna ask him.
Currently between you Larry and me probably.
Well, you know, and it's hard to take minutes when you're talking to people or trying to listen to you know, the discussion and I mean, I guess you can and I guess I know Libby used to, you, you know, the last few months, she just listened to the recording. So maybe they can get somebody to do that. That would be my suggestion to them. Is they could hire somebody to listen to that, take minutes. But Libby was pretty good at it. I think near the end, she was doing a good job with our minutes.
Yeah. She would send out the email and question this or that and say, hey, listen to the get on there and listen to what took place.
So, you know, and maybe, maybe if Richard is, you know, in Manchester to Monmouth, that's not too bad a territory to have to cover. It's not, Belgrade's a little further, so, but.
If he's gonna be the CEO in Ma- in, uh, Manchester, he's gonna have his hands full.
Right, yeah. Well, see, that's the thing is he, the, uh, Belgrade, I guess is small enough that it doesn't have the Newbeth Building Code.
That's correct. They don't have to, they don't, they, they're not mandated to inspect, although there, there are certain instances where the, um, financial institution that's backing, uh, co- a construction project wants it inspected anyway.
Yeah.
Now, that's, it surprised me when I heard he was going into Manchester because he doesn't have all the necessary certifications, is what I heard, you know?
So I, 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 I don't know how that works. So I did hear he has his own office again.
He has what?
He has his own office.
Yes, he moved back to where Dave used to be, Dave used to be, yeah. Whether he has all Dave's files is another question, but I don't know.
I don't know what's. So as I say, I haven't, it, it's been a little frustrating just and you know, maybe it's transition, maybe, maybe he will work fine once we can establish that relationship and
Uh, I heard he, he did make a comment as to, he wasn't sure exactly what all of his functions were expected to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Isn't there a job description? Maybe I should ask for it.
Yeah, yeah.
That might be a good starting point.
You know, is he gonna come to our meetings regularly? I mean, there may be meetings we don't need him.
Okay.
Um, but
On that issue, at the selectments meeting, okay, when they brought him on board, Richard brought, uh, you know, if he was expected to attend, you know, their meetings and the planning board's meetings and whatever. And what I conveyed to him was that if there was nothing on the agenda of any relevance and if all he'd do is basically sit in the audience, I, I didn't see any need for him to travel down from Belgrade. Just sit and listen. Okay, now I hope from that point, he wouldn't assume that we'd have to send him a formal invitation when we wanted him present, but
And, uh, yeah, I mean, he could zoom in, I suppose, if we're gonna continue to have the Zoom lane. I guess it's permitted.
Maybe could.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah.
And Bonnie, he may be like me and doesn't have much use for Zoom.
A lot of business getting done.
In listening, particularly, and, and I can't remember who it was, cause I can't see you. Someone said that there has been some construction in Monmouth and there has been no permitting or, or inspection. What liability does the town have? If, if we have a building code and we have a code enforcement officer and for whatever reason a building has not been inspected, does the town have liability for that?
Well, I think they might if they've issued a permit. They didn't issue a permit, maybe not.
Okay.
You know, I think it, it's, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, Bonnie, but I believe you're correct. I think that if we, if we issued a permit and like the structure was supposed to be inspected and it worked, no.
Okay, okay.
I, I
And I think, I, I think we need to be really careful in a public meeting, what we're saying has happened or has not happened. Until we're aware of things that have happened, I don't think we should speculate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, as I say, it would be good to get, you know, maybe we'll, we get him into the October meeting. And just to discuss that, I'm gonna be away. I think our next, the regular Tuesday would be the eighth. And I'm suggesting we meet on the fifteenth, the next week. And have that posted on the calendar. Um, one of the things Ray mentioned, which I think is a excellent idea is that we should invite Mike Seer to the October meeting. And we'd like to give him a plaque or something for his service. Even have a cake, maybe. And, uh, cause I think Mike is, my understanding is he's here most days during the week. Still doing some stuff out on, out of his, uh, workplace. So I don't know how people feel about, first of all, moving the meeting back a week.
Pushing it always in October.
In October.
Moving.
Or, well, what's, what's the calendar? Um, I can't.
The second one is the, is the thirteenth.
Second is the thirteenth.
Second Thursday is the thirteenth.
Well, let me double check.
Yeah.
I, somehow I got the dates. I gotta check the dates that I'm gonna be away. But if I'm gonna be away, I'd like to move it to the third Wednesday.
Not a big deal.
I'll let you all know.
Third Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday, yeah.
Okay.
So the, the third, the third Thursday in October is the twentieth.
Right.
Twenty, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And I may be all right, I may be back the thirteenth, you know, I think I'm back, uh, that week, so I think we're all set. But I would, I would think it's, it's, you know, uh, Mike's been on the planning board at least
Forever.
Over thirty years.
Over thirty years. I don't know if we can find out how long.
Absolutely a cake.
Yeah.
I'm in the process of getting his date on board. Okay, hopefully I, I can make it happen.
Yeah.
But what I found this, uh, last weekend was a letter from, uh, Secretary Johnson that was on the board, I know it was on the board, I think in the nineties. And it was dated, uh, nineteen ninety-three, I think it was the date on it. And basically back then they were mailing the minutes to us and that's what this was.
Oh.
But, you know, you were on the board, I was on the board, I was, Dave Lewis.
Was on the board.
Yeah. Yeah, with Tom Fairchild.
Yeah, yeah. Tom was on a long time.
Yeah. But Mike was with us then.
Yeah.
You gotta, but I, I'll, that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
Get a take, he came on board.
Yeah. And I think we could get a small pla- I mean, I don't know what we would, I mean, anyone have any idea other than a plaque, what? You know?
You could always get a model pickup truck and
We could frame a zoning map.
Yeah. A map of Monmouth that we all sign. Um, yeah, we could, we could get a nice map of Monmouth. Put a little plaque. Well, it used to be, you know, they, um, I don't know what they call those maps that the, uh, geological topo maps.
Yeah.
Used to be able to get those pretty easily.
Not anymore.
Yeah.
Oh, but that, that was, that's a very nice, instead of a plaque, a map of the town that, that you actually can use and he can look at it and say, yeah, I was there.
Yeah.
And I was there.
And we could put, we could probably have a little plaque put on it.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Maybe, uh, touch base with Doug and see if the custom, kind of, uh, constant people might have something map wise. You know, I probably wouldn't have all the streets or anything, but it'd be a kind of a layout of Monmouth, which would feature custom mall, but you know, other features, you know, who knows? Doesn't like, might have an idea.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
You also have the key map that's at the start of the parcel map in the town office. That you can refer back to, that, that would show quite a bit.
Well, it wouldn't be colored though, that, you know, it'd be nice to get a, you know, it used to be, sometimes, you know, you go into a, like a bookstore in Portland. And they have a section with old maps, uh, you know, that, that have been probably ripped out of books or something and they probably, probably important when they sell them for big money, but Um, okay, well, we'll work on that and I'll figure out, I, I think I'm back to thirteen. I think I'm back beginning of that week, so I just somehow was concerned that, you know, like this meeting is near the beginning of the month and I, I didn't, I didn't check them that. Um, so the other thing typically we do at our first meeting after the um, town meeting is to elect the planning board officers. Um, we usually have a chair, a vice chair and a secretary. So.
Shall we do it at this meeting?
I think we should do it at this meeting. We got, you know, we've got enough people here to do that.
And I guess.
I don't remember who's the secretary.
Yeah.
Should we continue with the same slate of officers?
Or not? It's been functional.
Yeah, cause I think, you know, the guidance that you've offered, this boy over the years, I definitely would like to see him continue.
I have no question about it.
Do we have a motion?
Second, third.
Fourth. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Bonnie, you still there?
Yes, I am, but as an alternate, can I vote?
You can vote on something like that. Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Um, yeah, so typically what happens, Bonnie, um, with the alternates is if one of the regular members is absent, then an alternate can vote at the meeting, at, at the particular, you know, sometimes someone says they may be there, but they'll say, oh, you know, this is in my neighborhood, I'm gonna recuse myself. Um, or somebody is absent. And Rick Rantz, the other alternate, and what we typically try to do is if they, you were active at this meeting and we reviewed something, well, the next meeting, if Rick was there, he would be the alternate, so that we
Okay.
We kind of, um,
Alternate.
Alternate, alternate the alternates. There you go.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, uh, you know, the good thing is the ordinances are online. We do have a book that we get every couple of years that has a lot of the state zoning land use laws. I'll try to see if there's a copy in the town office for you.
Okay.
I don't know what else there would be.
The other thing that I, I need to convey to Bonnie is that the chair designates which alternate is functioning at that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not a case, it's automatically, well, he did it last minute, so now it's my turn.
Yeah.
The chair designate.
Yeah, I try to remember. Sometimes I ask. Um, and sometimes, you know, the minutes will reflect who acted as, as an alternate.
Okay.
Occasionally, you know, if we're really busy some month, we might have an extra meeting, but we haven't had to do that for a little while. As I say, maybe, maybe now we're, we're not needed, we become redundant or whatever they but
Well, I'm just, I just appreciate that, um, have, have I been voted in yet?
Well, you did, the select board appoints you, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So like it or not, we have you.
I just, uh, thank you for accepting me because I'm as a result of my experiences, I really am more interested, um, yeah, I wanna know, somebody's gonna build subdivision on Annabessakook, which I know is a very delicate lake, for example. Um, I think we need to be really careful. The town needs to be careful, so I appreciate your accepting me into the group.
Okay.
Bonnie, one thing, one thing is your years up in Augusta you know, that's behind you could be very beneficial to this board. So we appreciate your being on board, okay? And it's okay if something comes up, if we lean at your way, that, that might help.
Okay. I hope I can be.
So we don't have any members of the public here, cause I didn't, I didn't get an agenda posted probably until yesterday, so.
So be it.
So be it. I mean,
Yeah.
It's not that we have a lot of business to conduct, but since we hadn't met since June, I thought it would be a good idea to do what we need to do, you know, the little things like the election of officers and um, and as I say, this person asked for some guidance, but we just couldn't really. Not, not a lot we can do with what we got there and and, uh, we can invite Richard to come to that meeting and next meeting and I have, Mike's gonna be around, I'll reach out to him.
Yeah, I'll contact Alan, but you know.
Yeah.
In case him, the boys had a special project for him and he's not gonna be here Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So anybody else have any other item they wanna bring up?
No, I've got a question though. How was it working out with Matt and Libby developing the agenda review?
Well, with Matt, it worked very well, actually. Matt was pretty efficient with the paperwork. You know, he'd get the agenda, he had, you know, I know there were problems getting other than electronic copies of things. But, you know, he sent me things, he'd call, he'd call me a couple of times. You know, if he had a question. Libby was all fine, you know, she didn't have too many. Um, as I say, we gotta find out from the town how they, how they're gonna handle our minutes. And, uh, gonna go from there. Uh, I, I think, I mean, I don't mind writing something up for tonight. gonna go from there. Uh, I, I think, I mean, I don't mind writing something up for tonight because we didn't, right, you know, uh. But I think, you know, if we really had somebody here, I would I would like to know that we can get someone to prepare us something and and as I say, if someone can get access to a recording, they can probably do it pretty easily and if if there's a question, they can get back to us, you know, if they couldn't tell who was, I mean, that's the whole thing is that if you have someone here, you don't have to identify who's speaking. You know, that, that's the problem with the recording. Yes. And, and it's a hassle, right? You know, it's
Yeah, even on the Zoom sometimes, uh, Libby wasn't happy because she couldn't make out the individual.
Yeah.
Which board member actually had made a statement.
And, and the problem with Zoom is people sometimes talk over one another because, you know, it's just I mean, it can happen in a, a meeting room when you're all there, but uh, I think when you're all on a different device, sometimes it's hard to be recognized, they could speak to begin with and so then you have people speaking. Okay, all right.
We'll make a motion to adjourn then.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, sir.
Aye.
Thank you, bye.
Bye, over and out. Seven forty-nine, record, maybe. Yeah. Likewise.
We got eight, six, nine, including the one, one of them. Drop the shoulder, clean it out, broke a wrist.
The soccer or?
Soccer, soccer.
Soccer, okay.
Yeah. All that gear is gone. He got the frigging shoulder.